Good morning. At this time, we'll call it over to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, November the 2nd. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Olicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilott.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to interfere with electronic communications. We do have one special presentation to make this morning. I'm going to ask Presiding District Court Judge Kevin Moriarity to join me at the podium this morning for this special proclamation. Judge, thank you.
Thank you.
This proclamation is presented to raise awareness to National Adoption Month, which is November. This month is set aside to celebrate adoption and the individuals who support and work with adoption families. It is an opportunity to raise awareness for children who are still searching and waiting for their forever family. So, in a small way, this proclamation is to celebrate Johnson County's adoptive families and raise awareness about the number of children who are still waiting to be adopted. So, on behalf of the Board, I am pleased to proclaim November as National Adoption Awareness Month. And Judge, I'll present this to you.
Thank you very much.
In recognition of the activities of the court in this area.
Thank you, Senator.
And your own personal commitment.
Yep. (applause).
Adoption is something that is very important. Let me give you, just, I'll be very brief, some facts that you may not be aware. There's approximately 400,000 children in the United States that are currently in foster care. Approximately 115,000 of those will not be able to go home, and they will need to find a place to be adopted. About 50 percent of children over six are not able to be adopted presently. That's the ones that we are trying to find homes for. Everybody wants the small children. We understand that. But there has to be a place in your heart and everyone's heart for those that are over six years old. They need a home, too. And in Johnson County, we do our best to facilitate adoptions. And we are able to have a special day on Saturday, and that is, the sheriff opens the doors and provides security for us, so we can have hearings and celebrate in a very special way. Through Adoption Week, we had approximately 30 adoptions. And for those of you, when you come to the courthouse, it's not always a pleasant experience. Adoptions are always, not only pleasant, they're a wonderful experience. And I can tell you, because I have two adopted children, and I can tell you, there's, it is special. And I want to thank everyone for this proclamation. And if you know someone, it doesn't matter how old you are, you can be a parent, and the kids will love you no matter how, how bad you may think you are.[266.83][266.83](laughter) Or what people say about you. They still love you. And I'll tell you, that has been the best thing for my wife and I, that having the opportunity, even in, we may get a little bit older than some young parents, but it's a wonderful experience. I would encourage all of you to do the same. Thank you.
(applause). Catherine's got one.
Got it?
All right. Thank you. I should also note Catherine Stocks was present this morning, Court Administrator, and a special thank you to all the court personnel and judges who work in this very, very important area. So, thank you all very much. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes. We'll be glad to receive that information.
Jana Walker, 25088 West 150th Terrace. I got a call last night, and I was so happy to hear that Lineage Logistics has decided to not build at the New Century Olathe location. I was so overcome with joy, I was crying. And I want to thank Lineage for not building at the New Century Olathe location. However, it then hit me and my neighbors, the fact that none of you have rescinded your vote on behalf of the community. All seven of you have still never rescinded your vote for the community, and that is a huge concern. That is a whole new situation that we have. And so, the lawsuit is still there, but you all have an opportunity to show the community that you do care and that you have listened. You all, before next Thursday, can rescind your vote, so this lawsuit can go away. And I would hope, after these months that have gone by, that you all would do that. It has now been said that you all have been known as the Board of Neglect, because you are neglecting to hear the community, you are neglecting to hear our local and state representatives, and the community needs you to do that. And we hope that you will speak up for the community, and so Lineage does not come back to Johnson County in any shape or form. And Mr. Ashcraft, I know that one of your biggest supporters asked you about a month ago, what would it take for you to rescind your vote? How many people would it take? Do we need to storm City Hall? Do we need to pull Gardner, Olathe, all of Johnson County and have a huge rally for you all to rescind your vote on one building? Do you all want to go to court against your community? I hope not. I am thankful for Lineage, and I hope that I can say thank you to all of you if you rescind your vote. And I definitely want to thank our local and state representatives who have spoken up for the community. We are so thankful for all of them. We are truly blessed. And I also want to thank the media, because they have listened to the community. So, on behalf of everyone, once again, please rescind your vote on the Lineage Logistics project and make this lawsuit go away. Please be here for the community that you represent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Someone else?
Good morning. My name is Sharon Carrrell. That's C-A-R-R-E-L. My address is 15555 South Moonlight Road, Olathe. I'm still going to speak against Lineage Logistics as if it was there until you do rescind your vote. I want you to know exactly how the community feels about this project. So, Commissioners, on your side, you posted that you agreed to go ahead with Lineage Logistics' proposal on December the 7th, 2016. On May 14th, 2017, I received a registered letter informing me of a meeting on May 24th about the proposed Lineage Logistics project. I assumed this was a preliminary meeting, but the only decision you had not settled was where to put the blue line around the building. You gave the residents located within 1,000 feet a 10-day notice. Legal requirement, yes, but not what would be considered a fair and just notice considering all of the deviations you allowed. At the meeting, we brought up the noise level. There was lighting placement brought up, the berm issue was brought up. There were many, many codes that this project could not meet, the requirements for yet. Everything was approved. What good does it do to have restrictions and codes if you do not hold to them? Commissioners, there is not enough land to build this building on. You know it, and I know it. You have gone to the extreme and added a useless piece of ground that does not give any benefit to the footprint of this building. It is too small to put the required retention pond and still build the berm to the required height. There is not enough room for the parking lot to be required for the height of, I'm sorry, located, height of, there is not enough room for the parking lot to be the required size. The truck parking is located six feet above the height of the berm. How much noise and site do you think that will afford the adjoining property? They can't stay within the required noise level of 70 dBAs, yet you know you plow ahead at our expense. We are not your enemies. We are the people you're supposed to represent. So, do your job and quit trying to shove this building onto the community. We don't want it. There are certain things that are not right, and this project is not right. And since I have time left, I want to read a couple of comments from the drivers at the Edwardsville plant. To begin with, there were 164 comments about the Edwardsville plant. Using a five-star rating, there were 112 comments rated below two. Here are three examples. The first one, truck driver number one, it feels wrong to even give them a one, but Google won't allow a zero. Truck driver number two, slow, that is the only way we can describe this place. Appointment was for 6:00 PM yesterday, didn't get started until 5:15 AM. That's a lot of reefer fuel. Burning, still not loaded at 8:00 AM. Update, 12 o'clock, just got loaded, waiting for the bill. Truck driver number three, bunch of lazy As, taking three hours just to get in the door, saying they charge $300 for every hour a driver is late for his delivery appointment. Can I collect my $900 since it took three hours just to get me in a door, and I was on time for my appointment? The rules are just beneficial for them. There is a rumor going around that Lineage Logistics has pulled out of this project. We can only hope so, and as long as it is a permanent decision, we'll all be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Sean Adams, 1416 West Sheridan, Olathe. Thank you again for having us here in your, what I call, chambers. I don't know if that's the correct word or not, but we thank you. I was ecstatic, as well as Jana, last night when, when we heard this news. I do hope that you will, like our friend that spoke, I don't know if he's here today. Yes, you are, right there. Last week, that we'd like to see some up-and-coming businesses and venues and business opportunities as far as jobs created in that area. He'd made mention that this is old technology. Let's, let's step into the 21st century. And I do hope that we aren't seeing you next week. Quite frankly, though your lovely faces are great, let's not, let's not do this again, guys. There is opportunity to change it, and there is opportunity to actually get something there that would benefit the people in that community. And, you know, and this is no offense to, to anyone, but the, we'd like for the individuals that live there to be able to work at the place that will be and the jobs that will be offered for whatever company now comes in. We know that you're going to work hard to create that economic growth. And that, let's let that be something that can be part of the community and not a hazard or an enemy of, of our safety. And so, we thank you. And thank you again for having us here.
Thank you.
Bill Bonine, 28570 West 159th. I too am glad, in Gardner, I'm sorry. I too am glad of the decision for them to put it off. I was excited to hear that. It doesn't sound like it's completely off, but still pleased that they're having some kind of response to the protest. They didn't say that in their, in their press release, but I think it makes a difference. What I'm concerned about is that you all haven't turned around, that you continue to stick with this. And last week, I ask again, why? What is so good about this that you guys will not change your mind? Not even one of you? This, this just baffles me. And I, I too ask that you change your mind and consider, consider the community other than this development. Development is important, but we're concerned about what type of development there and where this needs to be. We're not, we're not opposed to development. We need it. We need jobs, and that's, that's part of your job. But part of your job, too, is, is safety and the welfare of your citizens, and we don't feel that that's been adequately addressed. And that honestly, and some of the correspondence is very condescending, and some of the comments even towards the people that are against this. And yet, we live there. And I go on, I just don't understand how all of you can be so far away from this project and still have so much power to put it where the people don't want it. And with a couple of quotes again, last week, I talked about the difference between doing things right, which you guys keep continually saying that you're doing, and you've, you've done this. I would just ask about the 1,000 feet, that, yes, maybe that's the requirement, the state, but you're a little hard. Can't you go beyond that? Do you have to just do the bare minimum? Can't you tell people when this is affecting your neighborhood, when this project is coming on? Let's do the right thing, not just things right. Another quote, William Ward, "Leadership is based on inspiration, not domination; on cooperation, not intimidation." And we've, we've talked about the intimidation factor these past few months. And someone that we, we all know, that we know of, Abraham Lincoln, "Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power."
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is William Joyce, and I live at 4806 Belinder Court, Westwood, Kansas. The subject is a response to a letter from county appraiser Paul Welcome dated October 24, 2017, to the taxpayer of 4806 Belinder Court, Westwood, Kansas. The letter stated that since the year 2011, the taxpayer has lost every appraisal hearing at the informal, small claim and BOTA hearing. Those various hearing officials and county appraiser have ignored the evidence produced at those hearings by the 2009 and 2010 order and order on reconsideration that quote. "The court finds the subject property had structural, foundation, roof, mechanical system problem, as well as dated decor. While the subject property is located in an area of residences with greater appraisal values, the physical condition and deferred maintenance in the subject property are clearly atypical. The taxpayer estimated the cost to repair these items was well over $100,000, and the county did not resent any specific evidence to dispute these repair costs. Based thereon, the court finds that the subject property 2009 appraisal value is $84,900." Now, that's unquote, I mean, unquote now. These orders were among papers returned by the county appraiser, and they're the papers that were handed to here. And they, and many additional, they have taken 110 additional pictures taken by, I have over there. The county has ignored, one, the storm damage to the roof and gutters on the north side of the house by storms in 2011 and other storms in 2012 and 13. The damage to the front of the house when replacing a main water line when there was 16-degree temperature and 17 inches of snow in March 2013. Three, Google's damage to sanitary sewer line that reduced water usage to a minimum of, to a minimum for two weeks while searching for and repairing the damage. And that's a problem getting along with, out, any water hardly for two weeks. And four, other storm damage to trees and house. This taxpayer requests that the First District Commissioner and one or more other commissioners view the subject property and drive by number one comp and one other comp that should have been the number one comp for the years 2016 and 17, all within three or four blocks. And I penciled in that a family of four or plus, the county appraiser thinks they're going to borrow $124,000, not from FHA, and then spend $132,000, $180,000 for repairs and remodeling, or a total of around $256,304,000. And that puts it well over the most expensive house on the block.
Someone else?
Good morning. My name's Roberta Long, and I live in Gardner, Kansas. I actually live right up the road from the intermodal, so there is a refrigeration industrial plant there. They're getting ready to expand. The reason I bring that up is because this is much bigger than what's going on with linear logistics. You have a chance to rescind your vote, but that's going to send a message. This isn't just about linear logistics. This is about the safety of our citizens. We have no actual value either in the intermodal and also New Century. We're just like a pond in the middle of this, and we're exposed to all these dangers for financial gain. I'm, I'm all for growth. I'm in marketing, I'm in commercial finance. So, those things are very important to me. But what's more important to me are my children and my grandchildren and their safety. And I've done enough research on anhydrous ammonia to know that it's not safe. And there, I don't know if you know this or not, but in 2001, 2004, there were 40,000 incidents of anhydrous ammonia having leaked, and 4 percent of those were due to people stealing it to make methamphetamines. I mean, that's, it's, it's not just about a leak because someone's not taking care of their maintenance. There's so much more than that. Another case in point is Russell Stover's plant in Iola. The storm, about two or three weeks ago, my nephew works there. My sister called me, and she said her son was evacuated from Russell Stover's plant because the storm snapped the AC units, releasing anhydrous ammonia. Never even made the news. So, that's very close to home, and we're kind of in the center of all of this industry. And so, a lot of people bring up to me, well, you know, that's bringing jobs. We can be picky now. I mean, we're a highly-desired area to grow. We don't have to accept any kind of, just any kind of business that wants to come here. We can be choosy, and you have a chance to rescind your vote and be, you know, thoughtful about what we allow in and consider what the citizens want to bring into our community. And we can still have that growth. We have enough jobs now. We don't have to take in anything that wants to, to build in our, you know, right there in our market. We don't have to accept everything. We can consider the safety. Another person brought up to me, well, you've already got one at the intermodal, and it's getting ready to expand. And I said, that's like, so they're, they're saying, so, so what makes a difference if we put this one in a New Century? And keep in mind, I'm on the other end of Gardner. I'm by the intermodal. So, that particular one doesn't affect me directly as far as evacuation zone. But I told them, I said, that's like saying that if I'm driving down the highway and it's just me, it's the same as if I'm driving down the highway and there are 10 cars. The safety, my risk is much higher. The more we surround ourselves with these kinds of industries that have these risks with them, our risks are much higher. So, if you would be considerate of what the citizens have to say and put a little bit of thought and, you know, just consider what's safe for our community, we, we have the power now. We have the ability, like I said, to be picky and, you know, still have the exponential growth that we're going to have and we've been experiencing for the last 10 years. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.[1607.82][1607.82](applause). Someone else? Mr. Joyce, you have some papers to leave. Is that correct? Okay. All right. If there's no one else to be heard at this time, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. Moving to, excuse me, Jerry?
Good morning. My name's Jerry Stogstall. I live at 4414 Tollahawk Road in Prairie Village. I'm the state representative from the 21st District, and I'm here this morning to ask that you keep your support strong for the arts and arts funding in Johnson County.
Let me, excuse me, Representative, that, that item is later on our agenda.
Oh, okay.
And there will be opportunity to receive comment in that regard.
I will be back.
Glad you're here.[1664.53][1664.53](laughter) Glad you're here. Thank you. I will, notes for the record, I will be signing Attachment C, Certification of the Non-Federal Match for the Department of Health and Environment for the quarter July through September 2017 for Outreach Prevention and Early Intervention Services. That concludes the notes for the record. Moving to the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the proposed consent agenda.
Item number one, consider accepting FY 2017 Emergency Solutions Grant Supplemental Funds on behalf of sub-receivable, still to be determined, at no cost to the county in the amount of $337,745.
Are there any questions on this item? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? No one to be heard. It's back before the commission, Mr. Osterhaus.
Move that we approve. The consent agenda is read.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Olicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilott.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda. Item number two.
Consider approving the October 12, 2017 Business Session Minutes.
Commissioner Brown was absent. We do need a motion. So, moved. Mr. Osterhaus, moved. Mr. Osterhaus, second. Are there any additions or corrections? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Olicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Abstain.
And Chairman Ilott.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number three.
Resolution number 086-17 and City of Gardner application number SP-17-09. Consider a request from Kathleen Warman, Warman Architects and Waffle House, Inc., for approval of a approval of a site plan for construction of a commercial building at one-eight-five-zero East Santa Fe Street, Gardner, Kansas.
Mr. Greeley.
Good morning, Paul Greeley with Planning Department. This application is on a subject property that's within one mile of the New Century Airport, so comes to the Board of County Commissioners per that statute. It's been, it's in the city of Gardner, as you can see on the map here. Subject property's along Santa Fe, one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth Street, near the I-35 interchange. A New Century Airport runway is off to the north in this location. And, so it's been through the city processes, the city has approved this site plan for construction of a commercial building. It's been through the Airport Commission, through a public hearing, and the Airport Commission and staff both recommend approval of this. I'm available for questions.
This item is before us because of the proximity of this development to the airport, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, any questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There's no one to be heard, is back for the commission, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that resolution number zero-eight-six dash one-seven be adopted approving City of Gardner application number SP dash one-seven dash zero-nine site plan for construction of a commercial building at eighteen-fifty East Santa Fe Street, Gardner, Kansas, which is located within one mile of the new, of the Johnson County New Century Airport for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution as noted. Any further questions or discussion? If not, clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number four, resolution number zero-eight-seven dash one-seven and City of Gardner application number FDP dash seventeen dash zero-two. Consider a request from Paul Peck, Luke's Architects applicant and two-on, Luon owner for approval of a final development plan for construction of a single-story multi-tenant commercial building at nine-one-five East Lincoln Lane, Gardner, Kansas.
Mr. Greeley.
Paul Greeley, Planning Department. This property and project is also located within one mile of the New Century Airport, so comes to this board for consideration. It is in the city of Gardner, you can see on the overhead here, the subject property is located near Moonlight Road in Santa Fe and Gardner. Off to the right, up in this area, location is the, the runway. So it has been through the city's process, final development plan approval, approved by the city. The Airport Commission held a public hearing on it, and they and county staff recommend to approve this project.
Questions, Mr. Greeley? Again, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There's no one to be heard, back before the commission, a motion, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number zero-eight-seven dash one-seven approving City of Gardner application number FDP dash one-seven dash zero-two final development plan for construction of a multi-tenant commercial building at nine-one-five East Lincoln Lane, Gardner, Kansas, which is located within one mile of the Johnson County New Century Airport for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution as recommended. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number five.
Resolution number zero-eight-nine dash one-seven. Conduct a public hearing and consider an island annexation request made by the city of Alatha to annex approximately one-point-seven acres of land into the city limits of Alatha, Kansas.
Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Lynn with the Legal Department. This is a public hearing.
Excuse me. It is a public hearing.
On October fifth of this year, county staff received a request from the city of Alatha to approve an island annexation of property into the city limits of Alatha pursuant to KSA twelve-five-twenty-C. The real property, which is the subject of this annexation, consists of one tract of land, approximately one-point-seven acres in size, located just west of the intersection of Lone Elm and one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth in Spring Hill Township. The land does not adjoin the main body of the Alatha city limits, but rather is contiguous to an already-existing island of land that the city previously annexed. The property owners, which are Day Three LLC, gave their written consent to the city for the annexation of the property. In September of this year, the city did adopt a resolution in which the city deemed it advisable to annex the land and requested that the board find and determine whether the annexation will hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other city in Johnson County. Our Johnson County Planning Department issued a memorandum, which you've had, in which they concluded that the annexation would not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or any other city. And I believe Jay's here, if you have any questions for him. Due to statutorily imposed deadlines, you need to make a decision one way or the other today. State law requires in this situation that you, if you're going to approve this, you have to do it by a two-thirds vote. That translates into five of seven in order to pass this. We also were required by state law to know what is the proposed zoning and, and development of the property post-annexation. Received a statement from the city on behalf of the applicant stating that the applicant has requested rezoning to C-two commercial, or C-two community center zoning. The most likely development is some kind of neighborhood commercial development to C-one or C-two. These are basically low-intensity retail spaces in which the city could support some kind of mixed-use development with residential. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Mr. Lynn? Okay, well, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, public hearing is closed, and the item is back before the commission, Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, I'm available to make a motion if you're ready.
Well, is there, are there any questions? Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the island ex, island annexation request by the city of Alatha to annex the approximately one-point-seven acres of land into the city limits of Alatha for the reasons set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution of zero-eight-nine dash one-seven. Is there any further discussion? Being none, clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. I should note, just for the record, for those who might be attending this meeting for the first time, all the items on our regular agenda have previously been reviewed by the commission and staff last week at the agenda review period. Following this regular business session, we will have an agenda review for next week's items. So during those agenda review, there frequently is detailed information presented and vigorous discussion of the items. But they then are presented at our regular meetings. So, a lot of information has been shared and discussion has occurred prior to our official board meeting on these items. Next, we have three items that are somewhat related, and staff and those who are interested in commenting, I'm gonna ask that the information be presented on all three, we will vote on them separately, but there'll be an opportunity to receive one, one comment on any aspect of it. So, the clerk will please read those three items.
Item number six, resolution number zero-nine-zero dash one-seven. Consider adopting amendments to the Johnson County Public Art Program. Item number seven, consider eliminating the public art allocation for the medical examiner's facility. And item number eight, consider reducing the amount of public art allocation for the new courthouse to an amount not to exceed five-hundred-thousand dollars.
Mr. Waters.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. Joe Waters, Assistant County Manager. Chairman, described, we do have three items. The first I will run down is the, relates to the adoption of the, the resolution related to public art program itself. Little history on this, this was first passed and approved by the board in two thousand and six. In this program, there is an allocation of one percent of the total project cost on selected applicable major capital projects. That resolution also established the Public Art Commission as well as a public art program that describes the broad parameters and processes on which the system would work. And then the Public Art Commission established the operations standards and detailed procedures on how to implement. In October, I'm sorry, on August tenth, there was a study session held where we reviewed with the board a, a different approach, you know, on, and to take on the acquisition of public art as, and that then led to the, a conversation on October the fifth, that was a joint BOCC Public Art Commission meeting, where we discussed as a, as a larger body, the one percent project allocation, the upward limit of one million dollars, as it is described in, by resolution today, the Public Art Trust Fund that is also a part of that resolution, and maintenance of the, the art once it is put in place. There was also discussion about two specific projects, the medical examiner facility and the amount or of the allocation there, or the potential elimination of that, as well as the courthouse project that, the primary conversation there was also in the amount, perhaps reducing that amount. The outcome from that meeting was that we received feedback to bring back to the board the actions that we, we are bringing here today. And that is relative to all three of these agenda items. So here is, in, within this resolution, to summarize, and you have an edited version, so you could, could follow along in that edited resolution if you like. But the bottom line on this is a reduction in the upward amount of the, the allocations for art from one million down to five-hundred-thousand dollars. That would be the maximum on any specific project. It also clarifies the maintenance expenses as being a part of operating budgets and not, not the one percent, not a capital side, but an ongoing operating expense. And that would be within the facilities department or whichever department is, is responsible for that, or, or agency typically that might be responsible for that art once it's in place. The third change essentially to the resolution is the elimination of the Public Art Trust Fund. That fund was established resolute, by resolution, with the intent of accumulating potential gifts, grants, donations, or balances from projects that did not fully expend the dollars, or projects that did not generate enough money, seven, seventy-five thousand dollars being the threshold, to warrant the, the implementation of a public art project on a given project. So there's a variety of purposes for that trust fund. The trust fund has not, in fact, come into play in the eleven years because we have not had projects or dollars eligible for that. But the, the direction was to bring forward an elimination of that trust fund, which has been done. Staff did take the liberty of including, and for you all to consider, a gift fund so that we would still have the ability, should there be a gift in the form of cash gifts provided to the county, so we would have a way to receive that, to implement public art projects or support public art projects, or grants or anything like that. So we, we wanted to have, codify a method by which that could be done. And the last thing I would say is, in that, in that change with the Public Art Trust Fund, I mentioned that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold on, on a, on a public art project. So essentially, in eliminating the trust fund, we would effectively be increasing the size of the project that, that's the projects that are eligible. So up to a, in order to raise seventy-five thousand dollars of one percent, the minimum size project then becomes seven-point-five million dollars. So a five-million-dollar project, one percent would not be applied to it, seven-point-five million and above. With that, I would stand for any questions on this, unless Chairman, you would like for me to review and concept the other two?
Well, you know, clarification, it seemed to me like item number eight is related to changes in the, in the resolution that was adopted prior.
Yes, sir.
And item number seven, is that also part of the resolution, or that would be separate?
Item seven is not a part of the resolution. That is a determination by the board, is, is your, your purview, of course, on any given project, to adjust the amount. So in this case, that would be, you are needing to act separately.
Well, unless the parliamentarian has a different viewpoint, it seems to me like seven and eight should be combined into one motion related to the resolution. And then item, excuse me, six and eight, and seven would be considered separately. Mr. Jarrett?
You can certainly do it that way. You can vote on them separately, or you can combine any, any portion of them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Questions of Mr. Waters? All right, thank you, Joe. At this time, we'll be glad to receive public comment on any of the items, the three that have been spoken to, just simply state your name and address, and we'll be glad to receive your comments. Representative, good to see you again.
I'm back. Again, my name's Jerry Stogstall, I live at forty-four fourteen Tomahawk Road in Prairie Village, and I am the state representative from the twenty-first district from that area. And I wanted to come today to ask you again to remain strong in your commitment to the arts and arts funding here in Johnson County. I serve on the Commerce Committee in Topeka, and this has a great deal of impact on economic development, not only in Johnson County, but across the state. I was for several years president of the Trade Association for all the high-tech industries in Kansas and Missouri. And during that time, we surveyed companies on both the east and west coast and around the country, asking those companies what they look for, if they were going to relocate or start a new company somewhere. Number one, in those, almost every survey we ever took was great public schools. Two was great universities, because these are the kinds of companies that, that appreciate education and get their employees from universities and so on. And, but always in the top five was a rich arts and cultural environment. These companies that we want to attract to Kansas can locate anywhere, and they are not going to locate to an area where education is not valued and where there is not an arts and cultural environment that will appeal to their families and to their employees. Also, I think for a specific example here in, in Johnson County, for several years I've been involved, actually almost from day one, with the implementation of the interurban art house in downtown Overland Park. I served on their board of directors and only resigned last year when I was elected to the legislature. I think you will ask anybody in downtown Overland Park that that has been a tremendous addition to the community, and downtown Overland Park has spurred other development down there and will continue to spur development. We took a underutilized and really blighted building in downtown Overland Park and turned it into a, very much of a community asset. And I think that there, again, it's arts-based and it's, has an impact on our economic development. Lastly, I'm working with a number of legislators across the state to implement a bill that I have in the Commerce Committee right now to reinstate the Kansas Arts Commission. And the, that is a blight on our state that that was ever decommissioned by the present administration. And over the last five years, we've been the only state in the union that has not been in compliance with the National Endowment for the Arts. us a lot of money in NEA grants and other money that could come in for the arts in the state of Kansas. So I'm asking you today to look at these issues very, very carefully to try to keep your support for the arts very strong and do so not only because it's a it's a quality of life issue, it's an issue that addresses the beautification of our of our cities in Johnson County, and it's also a major economic development issue for Johnson County and the state of Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
I decided to stick around. And I didn't know this little table went down. So that's good for someone who's my height. I have absolutely no problem with us funding and keeping the arts.
For the record, did you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Shonda Adams, 1416 West Sheridan. Thank you, sir. But I would ask that we look at local artists in this. You know, it's easy for us to go to other states and find great artists and developers and things of that nature. But I think we will also find, I don't know if any of you attended the Johnson County Mental Health Art Fair that they had, there's some phenomenal, phenomenal artists right here, local, one of which sets out here at the coffee shop quite often. And so that's all that I would ask as a citizen is that we consider local artists. You know, they may be deemed starving artists, but they could certainly benefit in so many ways from this. So I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a teacher. I have notes. Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager's Office staff, and my fellow Johnson Countyans. I'm Christopher Leach. I reside at 8600 West 60th Street in lovely little Miriam on the east flank of Mount IKEA. Thank you for permitting these few brief remarks. On item seven particularly, I'm disappointed to note the call for elimination of funds for public art at the medical examiner facility. I believe we're missing an opportunity to establish something like a memorial garden or site for those countyans who've lost their lives to violence or illness, or who otherwise need the services of a coroner. And I urge you to reconsider that decision. I have for some time proudly served in good faith and trusting to your leadership as a public art commissioner for Johnson County, currently at the pleasure of Commissioner Schaefer of the 1st District. My honor in this role is threefold. I'm happy to serve my fellow citizens in a volunteer capacity. I am grateful to bring my small professional expertise to the service of county initiatives. And I am also pleased to join the swelling volume of our county's participation in arts and cultural activities on our home turf. You see, I worked for some years across the state line for a city funded cultural institution. I sat in many meetings in which was conceived and launched Kansas City's ambitious cultural business plan. The economic target of that city's investments in art and culture is, and I heard this often, attracting Johnson Countyans to museums, galleries, and autodarians, and taking money out of our pockets. It is an unfortunate commonplace among many of our Missouri neighbors to mock and deride county residents while gleefully eyeing our pocketbooks. I am pleased to say that this has never happened here. By the way, I've never heard those kind of remarks here in Johnson County. Indeed, I had to scold at least one mayor for this and several county legislators, not present, encouraging respect for us Kansans. So you can understand my delighted eagerness to serve the interests of art at the commission's behest in our state, our county, and my home. It's quite true, as our PAC Chair Larry Meeker is fond of reminding you, that the arts on all levels and of all varieties are a significant economic force of a mature, well-rounded, healthy community. Music, dance, fine art, the crafts, and allied industries are a significant component of our counties and our areas fiscal well-being. For instance, please be reminded that there are more museums in the United States than there are Starbucks and McDonald's restaurants combined. A Harris Poll tells us that in the U.S., 8.8% of adults attend classical music performances, whereas only 6% of U.S. adults attend NFL football games in a given year. Enrollment is shrinking at colleges nationally, yet our own Johnson County Community College is building a new headquarters for their fine arts programs. It's because art matters to people, and we're willing and eager to invest in it. We want you to continue to invest in it. Something those Kansas Cityans understand well is that our communities grow and prosper prosper via partnerships, and they stepped forward to incentivize what they wanted to see grow in solidarity with other public and private efforts to stimulate and encourage a thriving arts and culture economy. We see the effects of this in Johnson County, by the way. I'm not suggesting causality, but consider, our public art program is launched in 2007, and an urban museum opens. We install significant works at the Juvenile Justice Center and the Justice Annex, and the inner urban arts house is inspired to come into being. When private money sees that the county is placing a bet on art and culture, they'll ante up too. Now, I deeply respect the serious and concerted efforts of our commissioners to responsibly administer our public funds, and I must communicate my disappointment that today you perhaps are voting to shrink designated percentages so the public art expenditure I had hoped someday to appear before you to see that increase to 5 or even 10%. I don't realistically see that happening soon, yet I do avow that it is entirely right and proper and necessary for our county government to invest in the creation and exhibition of public facing fine art and craft objects to make this additional contribution to improving all facets of the quality of life in the finest county I know. As we grow and mature as the hub of this metropolitan area, the economic hub surely, the education hub and cultural, recognizing our mutual responsibilities to public life, physical safety, transportation, utilities, it is vital we also honor our duty to the human aesthetic sense, the ineffable, the incommunicable nature of spirit that is so profoundly evoked in works of art in our daily lives. Our county is good roads and schools and businesses, true. Those truths manifest because of our good people. We people, us, we're complex and multifaceted and subtle, and we find value in our interactions with art in public places. Art can do things that other human activities cannot, and it is vital to our survival. So vital that it is the most common human artifact that is consistently found in the remains of all cultures everywhere in the world and throughout time. I am an art historian, you can trust me on that. The value we people experience in art is a value as solid and tangible and recognizable as that summoned by any of the other concrete realities we build. The arts are not merely shiny accessories or frivolous baubles. Art is nothing to be afraid of or get angry about. The only frightening thing about art, I suppose, is the truths it can lead us to encounter. Are we ready? Art in all its forms is a means of direct communication with our common shared humanity. Arts are essential to life. To paraphrase Sir Winston Churchill, what do we in Johnson County work so hard and so successfully for, after all? What do we live for? If not for the heights of feeling, the soaring accomplishments of mind and heart that making and experiencing and supporting the arts affords us. I commend our county through you, our elected representatives, for any and all investments you can continue to make in art in Johnson County, and I vow to continue to support your efforts to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else? All right.
Hello, my name is Dana Knapp. I am the CEO and President of Arts KC, your Regional Metropolitan Arts Council. We work hard every day to promote, support, and advocate for the arts in a five county region, including Johnson County. Johnson County has enjoyed being a community of choice through your leadership, a choice in the region because of its quality of life and amenities. Not only do Johnson County residents enjoy clean, safe roads, sidewalks, award-winning public schools, prompt professional emergency response, friendly coordination among municipal departments, they also choose Johnson County for its arts, culture, and recreational amenities. Johnson County parks, trails, recreation, and arts activities are available for all residents to enjoy regardless of income or ability. That's what a good government provides. That's what you provide. Exceptional fulfillment of basic services and invite citizens into experiences that celebrate their community, their culture, and their history. Programs like 1% for Art also ensure access to the proven benefits, not only aesthetic, but also the health benefits of the exposure to art. There's a growing body of research that we are understanding that demonstrates the presence of artwork in hospitals, for example, shortens hospital stays, lessens the amount of medication needed by patients, combats depression, contributes to fewer doctor visits, all proven evidence through the Americans for the Arts research. Imagine what the presence of our artwork can do when applied to settings like prisons, courthouse, mental health service buildings. I'm here to encourage you to continue continue your historical support and regional leadership with your original commitment to the 1% for Art. You are a leader in the region, and we look to Johnson County to set a standard, and I encourage you to continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard, the item is back before the commission for consideration. You know, I would simply make make this comment. The courthouse is probably the most expensive project that we've seen in this county at about 145 million construction cost, which was the first time, at least in my tenure, that we've hit the $1 million max for public art. You know, over the years, we've accepted recommendations for public art, and this body has also refused to accept a recommendation for public art. So those decisions have been with us in the past and probably will be with us in the future. As to the courthouse, the the proposal, the idea to be pursued is that the designers and the architects of the courthouse will work with the Public Arts Commission to incorporate public art, perhaps throughout the facility. And what what form or or shape those art decisions will make, I don't know. But I think it's excellent approach for the iconic building that will represent Johnson County. One of the issues that we've discussed many times is that the the 1% for Art, whether it's a 10 million or a $20 million facility, whatever that 1% represents, that's what the art costs. And that's what the proposal, the cost proposal is presented. And there's always discussion as to whether a significant art could not have been presented at a lesser price than what that maximum 1% represents. So for a variety of reasons, the reduction from 1 million max to 500,000 is before us today, and I don't have any problem with that. That's still a significant commitment to public art in the courthouse and and other facilities around the county. You know, in this room, we have several pieces of art hanging on the wall, which represents efforts by local artists, and in many cases, emerging artists. At the Arts and Heritage Center, we also have various pieces of of art representing local artists displayed in that facility. And obviously, we have classes and active program to support the emerging artist program, those with special needs. So I don't see the county's commitment to public art being diminished. In 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 many, many ways, we continue to to support that effort. I do think the further identification, specific identification of the of the Arts Trust Fund as a gift fund certainly is appropriate. It's my understanding that back in 2006, none of us were present at that decision, but that that was one of the reasons that that set aside was mentioned in the resolution. So to be specific and offer clarity, I think I think is appropriate. Mr. Clicken?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with your comments quite a bit. I don't see this action today as a negative toward the arts. I know some folks may, because I think it's been convenient to put a dollar allocation to this this program. But I see it as a changing process. We're still very much committed to art as far as this county goes and as far as the most of us here around the commission are. But we believe that, or at least in my opinion, we believe that the issue of art is not just solo, it's not an item that you can isolate from a from the whole construction, the whole process of any renovations or new construction that we do, such as the courthouse or medical examiners facility and other things here. I think from my standpoint, the issue of the we pay good money to architects to design and work on the projects that that we have as far as this county goes. It's my belief that the issue of art or how that theme of whatever building is going up or renovation is going up, the question of art and how it wants to be portrayed to this community should be incorporated and developed and evaluated early into the design and the approach of of any work we do. And I don't like to see us dealing with the issue of art right here around the horseshoe, because all of us, each and every one of us, have different opinions of what art should be. And I'm going to tell you, some of the past projects that have come before here, isolated as they were as projects, I had to twist my neck a few times and wonder, I don't like it. Or in some cases, I may like it. And I don't want to be in that situation to vote on each individual based on my personal like or dislike of art. I want to see it in the total concept of what we're building or what we're renovating and things like that. I think this process and this resolution and what we're doing there is getting us closer to that. For those that are worried about having that isolated dollar amount, whether it's a 1% or a half million dollars, I think incorporating art from the very basic design and concept of what we're doing, from that point on, I'm not sure we can actually put a dollar value added at that point, because the whole structure and everything in that structure should be centered around some type of form of art, design, concept, and things like that. So so if we do some of that, for instance, we're talking about minimizing the allowance for art to $500,000 in the courthouse, my gut tells me that by the time that $200 million project is completed, someone with more of an artistic value or a mindset than probably than I do, will probably see a whole lot more art that it's probably more than a million dollars worth of art that's going to go into that building. So I'm looking at this not, I'm looking at this as a process change. We're going to deal with art, but we're going to deal with it at the earliest possible opportunity. And when we look at it from here, from our standpoint around the horseshoe here, we're going to look at the whole project holistically. And I'm depending on our our staff, who have been extremely competent with the construction and and projects that we've had in this county, and I'm I'm depending on the architects that we bring on on board to hold the the integrity of our interest of of art in Johnson County together as we move forward. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Mr. Allen?
Just real quickly, in my almost nine years up here, I consistently glad to work with the Public Arts Commission and supported. But these changes, as been mentioned before, I think are But these changes, as has been mentioned before, I think are reasonable to make, and I will continue to support public art. That $500,000 that's proposed for the courthouse, I believe, will probably be the most dollar amount that's been spent on public art on any building in Johnson County. So, but I will continue to serve or support public art, but I think based on the environment we're in today, I think these are reasonable changes. That 1% will continue. I'm not aware of the county proposing any buildings that are going to cost more than $50 million, so I don't know if that would even come into play in the future. But I think these changes are reasonable, and I just want to stress, I will continue to support public art. Thank you.
I probably should mention the, you know, the medical examiner's facility. Action in that regard does not mean there won't be art within the facility itself. I think we all agree that it's important that families and individuals who come to that facility have to face a traumatic experience. And so the facility itself, the interior, the waiting areas, the visiting areas, need to be appropriately presented under those circumstances. So other comments? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several comments and questions, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Waters, and on the first item, Resolution 90-17, one of the questions I asked was, "So what do we see the mission of the Arts Commission, Arts Council, Arts Program to be?" And Mr. Waters was kind enough to provide the purpose statement from the, Joe, help me out, the Public Arts Master Plan from 2000...
2014.
2014. And I was reading over that, and I was wondering if Mr. Waters could elaborate a little bit because in this purpose statement, it says, "The intent of public art is to engage the community, to actively involve them in setting high standards and guidelines for achieving scale and excellence in public projects." Mr. Waters, could you elaborate any on what it means achieving scale and then secondarily the excellence, the excellence in public art projects?
I think both of those really are tied to the notion that public art, certainly in the context of a 1% program for major capital projects, is intended to be the, those are the things that are larger in scale. They are, they go much further and would not really include paintings or photographs, as artistic as those may be, that would adorn a building or a space. The 1% program is really intended to incorporate art into a project, into a building, at a scale that is recognizable as public art, and the scale really somewhat connected to the physical volume as well as the space, the site that a given project occupies. So, I don't know how to say it much better than that, but if a person were going to do a sculptural solution in a courthouse lobby, it probably wouldn't be something this big. It would be something that would be befitting of the volume of the space and the location in the community and that sort of thing.
So we've done these projects historically for the last 10 years or so. How do we define or assess the level of success we've had in those efforts? There were some comments about secondary developments, and I think, didn't you mention that, Christopher? Some projects had secondary developments. Is that what we are using as a measuring guide, or is there something else that we are looking at?
I think I would say that the Public Art Commission certainly has not undertaken any efforts to determine any economic impact in the community from our incremental investments in these projects. We do look at how we are doing, and as was included in the master plan, how is the community overall doing? We physically, you know, there's maps included there with the names of the pieces in the community that has sponsored those public art pieces. So there's an inventory kept and sort of a tracking in that regard. Kind of looking at Sarah because there is a, Johnson County was included in a recent assessment for national, nationwide, but the metropolitan area was included in that, and there are certainly some data related to the arts in general, but not specific to a given project we may implement.
Well, okay. I would agree that art, for art's sake, I think it's a noble idea, but part of what I've had to weigh is for it to have an impact has to be accessible. And we've had comments, discussions about some artwork being less available for public interaction, public viewing behind closed doors or barbed wire fences. And in that regard, I think it makes sense for the commission to look at these projects on an individual basis and make some determination. So I understand that, and I think the argument for the medical examiner's office, I think, fits into that category. Mr. Chairman, I think your comments were on point there. But the issue I also wrestle with, and, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned this in part, is when you have an artificial amount set out there, it somehow gets modified into almost an entitlement thinking that, "Well, we've got this much money, therefore, we're going to spend it." And I really struggle with that because we have so many other basic services in the county that I think have as great an impact or even greater impact on the quality of life in this community. There were some comments that I'd noticed in the past that, you know, just on a financial basis, the rate of return for arts is five to one. And that makes sense. I can buy that. And we do that from time to time, but we look at other things that the county provides. And Betsy Gillespie, before she retired from the county, used to often quote that, "For every dollar we spend for the Corrections Work Release Program, we realize a $44 rate of return." And I've seen other quotes for mental health services, "For every dollar we spend for mental health services, the community realizes almost a $20 rate of return." So I think, well, so is this the best way to spend this money? And I know that's not a simple or direct tradeoff, but that's what I try to weigh and understand when we set these artificial levels. And I agree with Commissioner Clicker that I would see and understand and appreciate art being part of the, and I'll use the term architectural integrity of the facility, to make it attractive and appealing and welcoming, but to actually set money aside for art just for the sake of, "Well, we've got it, and we're going to spend it," I really am challenged with that because one of the issues I've raised, and Christopher probably remembers this, is we spent a fair amount of money on some artwork at the libraries, and I said, "Well, why don't we spend that money on the collection?" That's a core responsibility of a library and has an impact. But we don't consider that because, "Well, that's how it's set up. It's going to be split on art regardless." And I just wonder, is that necessarily the best way to make decisions? And I struggle with that because I think it's a very basic of my concern is, what is the role of government when it comes to art? Is it the role of government to spend and support art, or is it the role of government to provide necessary services? And I just, I just have trouble with the way it is currently configured and how we do it, that these are necessary services. So my votes on these items will reflect that. And, Mr. Chairman, just so I understand, is it your intent to have one resolution, or one motion, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, to cover items 90-17 and then, all right?
Six and eight.
Six and eight.
Six and eight.
Okay. Well, while I understand the changes that you want to make in six, and I think they make sense going forward, I'm not comfortable with the support of an automatic amount, particularly of this dollar amount, for public art, so my vote will have to reflect that if we keep those two combined.
Well, okay, if there's a sense to divide them, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been, am now, and continue to be a supporter of the arts. I'm also a businessman, and I worry about money, and I worry about priorities and juggling those and balancing those and making those fit together. The Board of County Commissioners, in my opinion, has multiple responsibilities, and one of those is managing the money piece. So in cutting us back from $1 million on an expenditure at the courthouse to $500,000 is good, it's still $500,000. So additionally, because I've motioned this from this chair in an open meeting, I have had multiple meetings with staff and with members of the PAC. I have had face-to-face conversations with members of the PAC, and I find most of the members of the Public Arts Commission to be engaging, thoughtful, and committed to what they're doing, and I applaud them for that. I have found a couple of members to be very defiant of the issues I've brought forward that have to do with open meetings and have to do with good government and open government, where there is light shined on what is being done and where the money is spent and how the process works. And I struggle with that a lot, a lot. And for that reason, I will continue to move for the dissolution of the Public Arts Commission, looking forward to a different group of people in a, with a different name, moving forward, doing the exact same work, but a different group of people there who understand my position, Kansas Open Meetings Act position, the Attorney General of Kansas position, and state statute. For those reasons stated, I will be supportive of items number six and eight, but I will also make both my fellow commissioners and the public aware, I will continue to pressure the issue of the dissolution of the Public Arts Commission as it stands now. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was wanting to ask Mr. Waters, we had a bit of this discussion yesterday, but the concept of creating a gift fund to, and I think this came out of our joint meeting discussions, to receive monies to be set aside specifically for the arts, is the intent of that fund to establish, and for lack of a better term, kind of an endowment and to seek funds and to hold them for this? There are some departments, I think the Parks Department has an endowment, Susan Moong, what's her title?
Foundation.
Foundation, excuse me.
Library has a foundation.
I should use the term foundation rather than endowment, but is that the intent to have an arts foundation, to seek funds and to manage them for public arts use?
I think the intent of the fund is to have the county have the flexibility to be able to receive gifts. We have had, you know, unsolicited gifts of actual public art as well as the work to install it in the past. So it is possible that we would have people in an unsolicited manner be willing to donate money towards a public art installation, but also to be able to receive grants. The Public Art Commission has not, I would say, has not been structured such that they are actively out seeking grants or donations. That would, might be a little bit different sort of a body, but certainly could. And if those opportunities were out there and came to our attention, we could absolutely pursue them.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one more, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Joe, if you could maybe run through for us, I saw an asset list of the assets of the Public Arts Commission at this time of the county. Can you run through quickly from memory where we purchased, what city did we buy that, did the artists reside in where we bought the public art that is in our inventory now? Do you know those?
Oh, and you are, well, thank you for saying off the top of my head because then that'll give you an indication of how accurate the, in the, with, in the city, I believe we have acquired three pieces from artists that are in the, off the top of my head, that are in the top of, that are in the metro area, but I think they, those two, two of those three artists, well, three pieces, two artists, and they are, I think, both located in Kansas City. And I'm looking out here to the audience, we have one that was from New York City, one from, at Arts and Heritage, I don't recall, Dallas. The other was donated by, the artist himself was Kansas, I'm not sure, I think he's traveling the world and has been for a number of years, but the work was donated from an architecture and construction design build team on a, not giving any hints to our next design builders, but the last design builders we worked with.
So Kansas City, Missouri, Dallas, Texas, and New York City. Okay. I didn't hear Johnson County in that or Kansas in that list. Is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Allen?
I would move that the board approve Resolution Number 090-17, adopting amendments to the Johnson County Public Arts Program superseding Resolution Number 121-06.
Second? Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the amendments to the Johnson County Public Art Program as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the way these three motions are packaged together, I will be supportive of this motion, but will state my objections to the amount for the courthouse on the item number eight.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. Let's go to item number eight. Mr. Allen?
Okay, I'm sorry. I would move for approval for the amount of the public art allocation for the new courthouse to an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Doiur, second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to allocate a maximum of $500,000 to the new courthouse project in the area of public art. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I will state my objections to this artificial amount. I am not convinced this is the best use of resources and will be voting against it, not because the reduction doesn't make sense, but that the amount itself does not make sense to me.
Okay. Point of clarification, this maximum amount would apply to other projects, right? The 1% would still be in place with a maximum of $500,000?
The resolution, yes, sir. And the resolution, the action on the resolution accomplishes that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Ashcraft's comments, $500,000 being an arbitrary number. I don't know if that's enough. I don't know if that's too much. I don't know. I don't know. That's not my world. I'm a contractor. I deal in absolutes. So that being said, I will be watching it carefully because I want to point out, it is an amount not to exceed $500,000. Less than that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. Motion on item nine, Mr. Allen.
Item seven.
Excuse me. Excuse me, seven.
I would move to eliminate the public art funding allocation for the medical examiner's facility.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to eliminate the public arts allocation for the medical examiner's facility. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Schaefer.
I'm going to vote against this. I think this is another public building, and if we start eliminating arts projects for some of our buildings, this will be a road to allow that to happen in another future building, so I'm going to vote against this particular issue. Because this is a public building, and there will be the public that attend this building for reasons they don't want to be there, and I think if there's a way we incorporate this into this project would be very, very positive for our county.
Okay. Mr. Clickum.
Mr. Chairman, this one, I was having difficulty on which direction I wanted to go. On one hand, since we're leaving money into the courthouse, my inclination is to leave some funding in, at least dedicated funding for the medical examiner. But that, again, it conflicts to what I was saying earlier, that I'd rather see the art component incorporated early into the facility, consistent to what the chairman is saying, is that we want a facility, I don't, it's a medical examiner's facility, and it doesn't necessarily breed, promote a real positive environment. I'm a, I expect that our architects and our staff here will do everything possible to make this as acceptable and pleasing to those folks that have to visit this place. And in that respect, I'm going to follow pretty much as the chairman alluded to, it's not a question that we're, we're not looking at art in this deal. We will be. But I'm going to follow the recommendation, go ahead and remove a certain dollar amount into it.
Other questions, comments? All right, the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
No.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
No.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. That concludes our regular agenda. I don't show any other items. Thank you all for your participation and comments, and even though I hope it doesn't need to be said, it shouldn't be said from time to time, there are a number of volunteers who give their time, energy, and talents to assist the county in this effort, and it is very much appreciated. Thank you all very much. Are there any other items on our regular agenda?
No, sir.
All right, turning to reports and communications, Mr. Zacharias.
Mr. Chairman, a few items to deal with. First of all, there is the information from Siri about the Johnson County non-residential building permit report for September. The report basically reflects what we talked about last month, that for multifamily housing and so forth, down a little bit, but there are certainly some, that retail is down in terms of total construction. However, issues for office are up, so it's kind of a mixed bag here, but still very positive in terms of total construction value being about 8.7% above last year, so still very strong in some of those respects. Second issue is Board of Zoning Appeals decision that is before you. This is the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is an issue basically that they have provided a decision with regards to the areas around Gardner Lake, about a garage that is needed to be built, that will violate the 25-foot setback, they're basically making a 7-foot setback. Our requirements indicate that should you want to go against that decision, the Board of Zoning Appeals, you can do so by conducting a public hearing in the two weeks period that's come forward to you. That's November the 14th, you have to schedule something for next week, as I understand it, so those sort of things are kind of coming on board from that point. But all that, Penny, any want to add to that? I'm sorry, Penny.
All right, I see no reason to further consider the Board of Zoning Appeals decision, quite frankly. Agreed.
It's here for your consideration for information, so.
Thank you.
Gardner Lake is certainly very difficult and tight area to go in and do activities, so it's tough to go in and have garages, there are several garages around there as well, so just for your information. Thirdly, we do have information in your packets about the state legislative platform being proposed, and Cindy is here to kind of talk about those issues if you'd like, to review that information.
Good morning, Kid Commissioners. Cindy Green from County Manager's Office. I was going to go through the platform and just review the changes that we've made, either additions or deletions, and if you have questions during that time, feel free to interrupt me, or we could take them at the end, whichever is your preference.
Ms. Green, let me ask you, you're not asking for action today, but there's.
No, this is just informational for review. Next week it will also be on the agenda, and then we will ask for final action on the 16th.
Thank you.
If that fits into everybody's schedule for getting things added or deleted to the document. The very first one I'm just going to talk about is under our core principles, what we've done in here, and we did this throughout the document, is we updated numbers, so if we're stating facts that we're going to be sharing with our legislators, we wanted to make sure we had the most up-to-date numbers. So, we've done some updates on our fiscal numbers under the maintaining fiscal stability. Under our action agenda items and priorities, we had eight items last year, we have reduced that to five. Some of that is based on one of the items passed and was moved off, and a couple other items, we don't see them necessarily getting action, we're not removing them from the platform, but we're just moving them around on the platform, and those happen to be that we're moving to the second tier, K-12 education financing, and then the intellectual and developmental disabilities item. And then we moved two items to our standing priorities, that's the development of the comprehensive economic development plan for the state of Kansas, and local control of right-of-way. And then we added one new priority, and this is in regards to the authority and duties of the appointed election commissioners, that impacts four counties, which we are one of. On our items, under the repeal of the property tax lid, we did make some additional changes to what we are looking for in exemptions. We are not positive this is going to get in there for a repeal this year, so we thought we're going to at least be ready and prepared to go, that we try and get some additional exemptions. And our primary concerns is the Public Building Commission, that those items be allowed under the exemption status, and also in regards to employee benefits, which would be our capers, our health care, because those are costs that we tend not to be able to control, and we think those would be critical to have that in there. Yes, Commissioner Clickum?
Can we have some more discussions somewhere down the line to see what other exemptions we may need to deal with? Because I'd like to get an understanding on how some of the issues like roads and mental health and some of these other things, whether or not they're part of it, part of an exemption already, or if we need to consider these other items to be added to those.
Okay. And we do have mental health in here already, it's not a new addition, but it is in there from last year's platform, but in regards to transportation, those tend to come under bonding programs, and we are able to take that as a deduction, but if you want to put the actual language for transit in here of some type, we can discuss that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and we do have, we pay out of the general fund road projects, especially in District Six and Three. We do allocate funds periodically for that, and our needs kind of change. I'm also concerned, is JCDs in this exception?
Yes, it is a new exception, yes. We already had that in there, the Intellectual and Developmental Disability Services and Mental Health Services was already in.
At some point down the line, we could visit a little bit more, but want to make sure we get them all in there, that, not only that we see the day, but we may see in the horizon here down the line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but those with special needs ID, JCDs would be impacted by Medicaid expansion, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. The next one is expansion of Medicaid, and we just did a little bit of changes in there, notifying them, to remind them that we are required to have a public health department, and that we provide mental health services, and that is really the impact that the county sees, is when we don't have a match that we would be able to get typically from some of these people that might have Medicaid. And so we would like to remind them that this is a piece of the state government that we are handling for them, and that we would like to be able to have that expansion to cover those costs. And then some of the other language in there is just realizing that a lot of people, we know what Med Act is here locally, but somebody out West may not know exactly what that is, so we just broaden the definition in there, explaining what Med Act is for us in Johnson County. The next one in regards to transportation, and this is 2.3, if you're looking at the numbers that are affiliated with it, we added some specific projects that we're concerned about, that we really want to get funding for, not that we anticipate seeing a new transportation plan, but this is more just a reminder as we prepare for when T-Works expires in the near future, it doesn't, it exists anymore, that we're talking to them. Here's the things that we already know that need to be done in our county, and we want to be on the lookout for. So, if you have any other specific projects that you think we've missed, we tried to really select the major highway projects that are important to us, that we would get state and/or federal funding for, is what we've put in there. Next is capers funding, and really this was just an update of the language, reminding them of all the loans and different things they've taken, and what their payment structure is, that we would prefer they pay it sooner, make their payments on time, and pay the interest that is due. So we've updated that language to include that. The next one is the brand-new one that we have added in, and this is the authority and duties of the appointed election commissioner, that we would like to have that authority under your purview, just like it would be for any department heads. So we are not requesting that the Secretary of State not appoint in the county's over $125,000 the actual election commissioner, but we would like for that election commissioner to fall under your authority. And we are working also with KC on that in the other four counties. We've come to agreement, because some of the other counties wanted to push it further than we did, and we think that this would be the best option to try and get this piece done this next year. I am going to move on to 2.7, which is a statutory pass-through. Again, these are just updates of numbers, and just to remind you, it has been 20 years since they quit funding several of these programs that are in the statute, and we are up to $2.2 billion, is what the league has estimated that the loss is to local governments in Kansas. Next one is Medicaid and mental health rehabilitation codes. This is also another new item that we anticipate may come through this session, and this is in regards to, it's the psycho-social treatment providers. It's a special code that we are allowed, our community mental health are, health are the only ones that are allowed to bill for these particular codes, and there are some people that would like to expand that and allow other individuals to be able to also bill for those, and you may think, well, that's good, we have more people working on this. Our concern is that we have some of these codes that help cover our cost and pay for a lot of the programs that we do, and if we end up having competition for these programs, they take away the revenue that we get for this, but we still then are required to give service to all those in need, whether they have any health care insurance. So, it's almost like you think about somebody going to an emergency room, they're going to take care of you, but the hospitals also know that they may not get paid. But if we know we have some of our patients that have coverage, that we can help cover some of our costs, it helps us in the long run cover those. So, this one we think will be an important one that we keep an eye on, to help with the funding sources that come in and cover the mental health, which we already take a loss on, and we've stated some of those numbers, but it will continue to erode that base if we allow this to go away. The next one is for intellectual and developmental disabilities. This is just that we're fact that we're moving it to the Tier Two, and because we did get a 4% increase this past year, we're asking that they maintain that, so that we don't just lose it. We've gotten that increase, which we had in the past, so this is updating the language to please continue to give us that, and not take it away.
Clarify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, question?
Yes. Ms. Green, the last sentence refers to Project Search. Are we asking for additional funds there, or is that included in the 4% that has already been approved?
I'm going to ask Mari to confirm with me, but I believe that we get, we fund that here in Johnson County, and we're asking them that that would be a program that's been successful, and we would like to have funding cover that, but that doesn't cover. Is that correct?
That's correct, however, these are two distinct funding streams. The 4% rate increase is the Medicaid dollars. This sentence is asking for funding from Kansas Rehabilitation Services, the state's vocational rehabilitation services, to allocate funds for Project Search.
That's a new funding source?
Yeah, it would be, yes.
Different, yeah.
Okay, continue.
All right. Okay. K-12 funding, we have just moved that to a different item level on the platform, there is no changes to that, because we were going to edit it, and then the Supreme Court has changed that, so we know they're going to be reviewing that formula again, so we do want to stay engaged and keep an eye on that. The next one is in supporting the compensating use tax on remote sales. We more have language in there that suggested our local state officials talk to the federal officials and get this worked out, and actually last year several bills were introduced under this item, and so we're asking for them to try and find a way to facilitate collecting this tax that is already due. So this is not a new tax, this is tax that is due on items. If you purchase things on the internet, there is a line 19 on your income tax form that all citizens, and I'm sure you all participate in that, that you should put a number in there if you are buying things online that you've not paid sales tax for.
Question, there is a question previously.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Green, I noticed on the previous education financing wording to the effect that is presented here has been restated for a number of years, and I was just wondering, because I've asked this question before, if there's been any further explanation or definition of what it means to have a world-class education, and is that part of the law, or is that something we interject?
I believe that is just something we interject. I think the part of the law is the adequate and equitable funding that comes out of the law.
Is that an official position of the school boards or something like that?
No, it's our statement.
Right. But that's our statement, but that's.
It's our statement.
We aren't borrowing it from some other source.
As far as I know, no. That's our statement.
Okay, continue.
All right. The contracts between certain municipalities, that was an issue that you had on there, and it passed last year, so we're removing that. The next one is Section 3.8 in regards to dark stores, and this is a dark store theory where large box stores primarily are going in and saying that they think that their assessed value should be based on the fact that the store is dark or empty, not on the function that it's selling, and based on retail sales, and that it's a functional building of what it would sell for. They want it based on what it would sell for if it was sitting empty and dark. And we would be opposed to this, because this would create havoc amongst our system of every box store would come in for that eventually, and every retail, and eventually homeowners could say, and well, then let's say my house is empty. So, this is a theory that is going on nationwide, and we want to be prepared to oppose this and/or support if some language is in there that would prevent the Board of Tax Appeals from allowing this to occur. So, this again is a new item.
Okay.
On motor vehicle systems, I know that they have talked to you multiple times, but they want to encourage and support the fact that we need to be going to the digital license plate production and central plate distribution. Kansas Open Records Act on 311, this one, the language is changing it just to update some changes to the law that occurred last year, and that we do oppose these statutory caps and such that they have put on there. Next one is under Kansas Aviation Program. There is a $5,000 state appropriation that comes out of Department of Transportation, and because of the impact that airports have in the state, our airport is asking us that we ask them to increase that amount that's appropriated. We think there is a $30 billion economic impact in the state of Kansas, and $5 million is not very much for a matching grant, and we would like to see that dollar amount increased.
What item number are you on, Cindy?
I am sorry, I have jumped all the way to 3.23.
It's on page six, yeah.
On page six. So we are getting close to the end here. Under aging services, we've just added language that they continue to full-fund this program, because they also again did some of an increase, we want to make sure they continue that. Under psychiatric hospital resources, 3.26, we have just updated the numbers in there and listed how our people would be served if those numbers changed. And then 3.27 is under funding for the mental health, mental. And then 3.27 is under funding for the mental health, mental health services for underinsured and insured, uninsured and underinsured, got too much going on there. So this is a new item that we have added in here, and it's just really sharing some of the numbers that we, when we've done some research recently, of the cumulative effect on our numbers of what we're spending on mental health, and how important we think that is in Johnson County, that we want them to continue to help restore some of those state funds for the mental health. And then under local health departments, we have just updated the stats in that also. And then we do have a new one under the, it's 3.35, which should be on your second-to-last page, in regards to community corrections and criminal justice. Actually, this is not a new one, this is an addition to one, that we are asking that, this is some changes in regards to how we are handling our youth, and to where they're trying to have them in more local programs and not put into facilities and such, and that we just want to make sure that those funds are used correctly, and that there is transparency on how those funds are used, because there was to be a savings by keeping them out of facilities. But then we want to make sure some of that savings is going into the local programs to still help those local youth. And then under court administration, they had some updates on some language that they wanted to include in there, that we continue to support, that we don't just go by the one county, one judge, and that we adequately fund all their staff positions. And then the very last item is a new one, and it's in regards to domestic violence and sexual assault funding, that we get funding that comes down to us locally in Safe Home. So we've added some language that we want to encourage that funding, because that program does help us locally here take care of that need.
All right, well, thank you for that thorough review. I would, we've talked about this before, you know, legislators' eyes tend to glaze over when you give them a big packet of information like this, and, but it is important that we have adopted a position that if a question comes up, can be referred to. So I think it's very important that next week we focus also on four or five items that can be on a palm card that we consider to be the priority item, so that they have that ready access to information. So we can do that next week also. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cindy, I would like to visit offline, we don't need to do that now, but on item 3.8, dark store theory.
Okay.
I'm thinking you saw that coming. So I would like to visit about that one.
I would be happy to.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Two quick things, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Green, on 3.6, it says this legislation is unconstitutional. Have the courts ruled this, or is this our opinion on this issue? I'm just a little confused. If you could find out and let me know, I'd appreciate it. And my second question is, have we coordinated our platform or visited with the sheriff and the courts and the DA in terms of what their legislative needs are, to see we, make sure that we're not advocating to go right and they're advocating to go left? Have we covered that, those bases? And anybody else, JCDs, libraries?
Courts have been involved in that activity, yes, and the DA and so forth. So yes, we even tried to include all their activities in this as well. We do a general search for all our departments to say bring things forward. That does not mean that at some point then there might be some, something that we may not either chime in on, or may not be in total disagreement that the other elected officials may want to do, but we try to attempt to make sure we're on the same page.
Very good, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? All right, Cindy, thank you very much.
One other item if I may, Mr. Chairman, if we're done with that, just to remind you, you also have a copy of the joint city-county platform as well that we'll talk about. We did reveal this to our city counterparts yesterday. It's very similar to what we covered just now. Some changes will be modifying, is repeal of property tax lid in your materials. We'll be adding information about also the Public Building Commission debt on that one. Finally, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just want to introduce a gentleman who traveled from afar to go ahead and be part of this today. That's Mr. Steve Hill, who is our Chief Executive Officer for the Clutha District Council, District Council in New Zealand. Steve, we appreciate you being here. Thank you very much for your presence.
I think several of us had an opportunity to visit with you earlier, and glad you're here. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, moving to commission comments, Mr. Brown?
None, thank you.
Mr. Osterhaus?
Had a couple. Our annual writers' conference is happening at the Johnson County Library, and so happening over the next few days. So if you're in any way, shape, or form a writer, want to hone your skills a little bit, throw that out there for you. And then Monday, I had the opportunity to give some scouts from Troop 265 and Cub Scout Pack 3265 from Holy Spirit, Novillon Park, a tour of the county building, and kind of give them a little idea of what we do, answer some of their questions, and they really appreciated the candy that was in Commissioner Brown's office.
I noticed.
All right, Mr. Allen?
No comments.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Two items, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to turn to Ms. Post Oak Ferguson and ask her if anything special happened in San Antonio that she was going to elaborate on to anyone sitting at the DAS. Make sure that opportunity is presented itself.
I'd be happy to. I wasn't sure if the chairman, I think the chairman highlighted it last week, or was maybe going to, but.
Well, I apologize. I apologize.
Would you like me to, I can expand on it again, though. Honus won an award from the KU, it's called CUSAMATS, which is the KU City Managers, City and County Managers, Interns, and Trainees, basically the alumni association for the KUMPA program. Honored Honus with the managerial excellence award, and it's named after Buford Watson, former city manager of the city of Lawrence, who Honus actually worked for. So congratulations, Honus, for that award.
Again.
Well, that's a particularly big deal, Mr. Chairman, because the county manager was ultimately surprised, and he said he only had three minutes to prepare his remarks. And surprisingly, it only took him a half an hour to respond, so.
Exactly, that's right, yeah. I gave the microphone finally for thirty minutes.
The second item, Mr. Chairman, a number of weeks ago, we had discussions regarding fire department operations, and there was talk about developing a charter for that, and I was wondering if that was going to be available to the commission anytime in the near future.
We have had one meeting, the board representatives with fire district officials, and we have another one scheduled, I think, November 20, to receive the standard of service report, which has not been completed, at least at that time, and then we will proceed beyond that point.
So will the, will the charter be coming back to us for review and consideration?
If there is a charter, yes. Mr. Kleck?
Nothing.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please remember to go vote today, tomorrow, up till next Tuesday. We have, everyone has a right to vote, of course, but, and we all, we all have something to vote for this time, so please remember to go vote.
Linda brings up a subject, when is the vote canvas for Tuesday's election? That would be the following Monday?
November 13th.
November the 13th.
13th.
So make note of that, and if any of the commissioners are unable to be present, please let clerk.
No.
A couple of items, on September 28, 2017, the Board of County Commissioners returned to the Planning Commission our recommendation regarding proposed amendments to the zoning regulations by Directive Number 9-28-17. Further consideration and comment were requested from that planning board by November 1, 2017, which is yesterday. On October 24, 2017, the Planning Commission reviewed and considered the directive and revised its original recommendations to the board. That recommendation was sent Wednesday, November 1, to each of us by email, so we've received that notification. And further, staff announced at the Planning Commission meeting that the proposed amendments to the zoning regulations would be placed on the board's agenda November 16, 2017, for consideration. Just notification. Please note, we have a study session to discuss the rating agency update scheduled for 1:00 PM today. That study session will be downstairs in Room 202204. And congratulations to Commissioner Brown for completing the, or for recent graduation from Leadership Kansas program. So any questions pertaining to Kansas? And where are some of the best places to eat around the state Mr. Brown will be able to offer, so.
I have a list.
Don't even start. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll take a short break and come back for the Public Building Commission agenda, followed by agenda review. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.